Anybody else need to get a snack before we get started? No last minute snacks?
Going once?
Twice? Okay, it's 10:00 AM on Friday. Whatever day this is, the fifteenth maybe.
I believe so.
So, we'll call the meeting to order. First of all, I'd like to just say if it wasn't Friday, I might not be here. I'm so glad it's Friday. We're all, it's been a long week for everybody and particularly for the staff, Bobby and Renee and all the staff, thank you for all your efforts on this budget. And it's not an easy budget. And it's not an easy year, it never is an easy year that I know of. So, we'll hope for a great workshop here this morning and visiting. And so, thank you all, appreciate it. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Attaberry and we're going to get this thing going. Maybe we can get out of here before three o'clock.
We're going to need more snacks.
That's true.
Okay, well. More snacks, okay, we can call in. We can get DoorDash or somebody to come bring some stuff, so.
Yeah, we need to eat all the snacks. We don't need to waste anything. Well, good morning, everybody. And what this meeting is really about today is we have got all the numbers gathered for the budget and what you have before you and what you're going to see today that Laurie is going to present is going to go through it. It's not going to take her long to go through it because we've got it condensed down to a few documents. We've added some things here at the last minute to give you more information. We're showing things that we can cover with the general fund with our taxing certainly as it is right now. And then we're showing things that are needs that are not funded. And if you wanted to fund some of those, then it goes into where the tax increase might be necessary from one cent to five cents. So, each one carries a little bit more as far as what kind of things we can do. A lot of these needs are things not only that we have identified but that you have identified with us in the past workshops and budget retreats that we've had as things you'd like to see improvement on. Streets certainly being one of those, parks being one of those. So, that's what you're going to see. If the choice, the decision at the end of the September meeting is no tax increase, then we can live with that. But those needs won't be met unless they could be met in some other ways that we had not anticipated or some kind of revenue that comes in that we had not planned on for the year. That usually doesn't happen. We don't get Christmas bonus checks, unfortunately. I wish we did so that we could do that. So, today is about listening to the presentation, asking questions, looking at what the tax rate increases show and what they do. No decision has to be made today on what we're going to do with that. The decision will have to be made at the first meeting in September, which will be September the second. And that's when we'll do a roll call vote and you will have to make a decision on the tax rate. And then we will adopt the budget on the fifteenth. Now, I've got Laurie checking, I think that, and this is a what if, if we decided today we're going to do a three cent tax rate and then when we get to September the second, between that and the fifteenth, we decided, no, we want that to be one cent, we don't want that to be three cents. She's checking to be sure that we can legally change it at that point. So, if your mind changed and you were at this number and you wanted to go to this number, then she's going to verify that for us that we can do that. I believe we can, but we're going to check that. So, that gives you about four weeks from today to be able to make a final decision if a tax rate is something that you want to pursue. So, that's, I say that so that you don't think that we have to make a decision today on what we've got to do on that, you don't. So, we'll go over the information. Please ask questions as we go through. And if there's something you don't understand or we need to get more information on, again, that's why we have the four-week time period in here, we've got time to do that. So, that's the plan for today. Any questions? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Laurie and we'll get started.
It's the Laurie Show. Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome to our Budget Workshop 2.0. As Bobby said, this year has had its challenges, more so than last year, in my opinion. We have one month left to go, so we're almost there, just a little bit longer. So, I want to just jump off with the, starting with the general fund. Fiscal year 25, as you know, we budgeted to end our fund, our days of reserve with 61 days. The middle column will show you that we are projected to be on target with that. That is credit to staff for being conservative and mindful of their expenses and doing what they're part, what they can do. Fiscal year 26, the preliminary budget is a different story. As you can see, we are looking at ending with 56 days of reserve, which is below our reserve requirements. But I do want to touch on some of the other figures in that column. The transfers, if you notice, we do have a larger amount of transfers into the fund. I just wanted to point out what the majority is that makes that up. We do have our radio core project that I believe you are familiar with, that provides radio, radio system and channels that are critical for emergency situations. That is being funded from our CIP fund this year. And so, that transfer goes into the general operating fund to cover the cost for that. So, that's what that large, there's about $470,000 being transferred in for that alone. Also, if you recall, the HOT fund supports our tourism division, so that's about $750,000. That will transfer from HOT funds into the general fund to support that division. And then we have our annual aquatic trans-
How much was that transfer?
About $750,000.
Thank you.
And then, of course, we have our annual aquatic transfer, which our Parks Fund will transfer to the general fund to support the loss for operating our pool. And we're budgeting or anticipating about $290,000 for that. So, those are the larger transfers. Of course, if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to go through every transfer that makes up that full amount. So, feel free to get with me at any time. We also have a transfer I should have mentioned from our TASWA fund this year to help cover our COLAs and market adjustments for employee retainage. Typically, the general fund will absorb that increase, but as you can see, the general fund just can't support it. We worked hard to get our staff, to get the qualified staff that we have. You know, we feel it's important to have those COLAs and market adjustments to keep staff. Okay, so let's look at the next slide. The reason for our top increases in the general fund for fiscal year 26. I've put these in order by percentage increase rather than dollar increase. The first one is our grant matches. As you know, we have a SAFER grant for the fire department and they will hire 21 firefighters to train and plan for our growth in the Northwest Development Area. And so, that is almost $500,000 that we need for our portion of that match. Auto maintenance repairs have hurt us significantly this year. And if you look at that line, we budgeted $392,000 and we're estimating to hit $960,000. Keep in mind that some of that equipment is specialized, like fire engines, we have our police vehicles, you know, that take a beating on a daily basis. So, there's a lot of factors that go into those repair costs. We have aging equipment, a lot of it is our refuse trucks that are very old. I don't think a week goes by, I don't see one of those trucks, an invoice come through for one of those trucks to repair something major on our refuse trucks. So, other things that we have, tires and tubes, gas and propane, insurance, our property and liability insurance, we have no control over that. It did increase the general fund side $88,000 and approximately the same amount in addition to that on the utility fund side. Street patch material, we are going over budget this year with that. I think we will come in more than $110,000 over the $100,000 budgeted. We have our TERS contributions, which are up significantly this year at 400, or for fiscal year 26, they will increase by $424,000. We have FLSA overtime, which is mandatory for our fire department, so we don't have a choice on that. We've increased that slowly each year, trying to get it to where our budget needs to be. And we're still falling a little bit short. I do want to mention the enterprise car rental program. That amount I should have taken out because we do have offsetting revenue from the auctions of the older vehicles that are being replaced. So, that will not be a $90,000 increase to our budget. My apologies for that, I didn't catch that till this morning, so disregard that amount. If you have a question, because when I was reviewing this, I thought, what questions would I have that council may have? One was the janitorial expense. If you notice, it's up significantly, about $67,000. And that is actually due to us restructuring how janitorial was coded. I discovered that a lot of divisions were coding that to building maintenance. So, we had to pull, we pulled that out of building maintenance into janitorial. So, that's why that number is bigger. Now, our building maintenance goes over budget every year. Now, it's just going over budget a little bit less, but it still will be over budget in building maintenance. But now we have a better picture of what our janitorial needs are separate from the building maintenance. So, I just wanted to provide that explanation. Okay, as you know, we look at all possible funding sources that we have. This year, we are relying heavily on our TASWA fund. If you look at the very top, under the expenditure section, if you look at the top, probably the first six or seven amounts on the right-hand column, those are costs related to our refuse department, either for financing equipment or helping to support operating costs or costs for containers and dumpsters. So, that's up at the top. Go down a little bit, we have $100,000 that we will be transferring to the street fund to help with that. As we know, our streets will take, can take all the funding it can get. And then at the bottom, we have the COLA and pay adjustments that we talked about earlier, which include an increase to insurance benefits for our employees, which are very minimal on the insurance benefits. And then at the bottom, I have a note for the COLA adjustments and to explain the pay adjustments, which is to bring all of our staff up to a livable wage of $40,000 per year. We have several people that are about 38, 39, they're almost there, and we felt it important to give them that livable wage. Another funding source that we look at is our TERS fund. So, this year, we are looking to fund $100,000 in much-needed library repairs out of our TERS III. TERS III will also support a street sweeping machine for downtown. Now, this machine can be used citywide. It's not just for Main Street, but with the investment that we had just done with our D3 project, it is dedicated mostly to that to preserve our investment. We also have in TERS V, Munson Park Road repairs. I know the Waterloo baseball park, parking and roads are also in dire need of repairs. I just don't have that listed on there. We are just, this amount is only to support the Munson Park roads. We also have Waterloo Lake erosion pairs. Erosion can be a significant issue if you don't address it early on. And then, at the bottom, we have our projected ending balances for fiscal year 25 of our TERS. I just want to point out that a lot of those balances are obligated in fiscal year 26. So, that's not money that we have that we can just budget additional things for. It may be already earmarked for payments like on the visitor center or the D3 project. So, I just didn't want that to be misleading and council to think we have all those funds sitting there. Now, this slide I put together to show the revenue that can be generated from a property tax increase and what that revenue could cover. So, if you look at a two-cent increase, that would provide us with $500,000 in additional street funding. A three-cent increase would provide that funding along with some gateway corridor improvements, a Main Street maintenance worker and some additional right-of-way maintenance and mowing, which is good for the city. It looks like we care about our citizens and we're taking care of our community. So, on the four-cent increase, we have all of those things, but also some additional needed staff, which includes a communications specialist to dispatchers, in other words. And then, let's see, we have a communications media coordinator. Oh, I'm sorry, the four cents would not support the communications. It would only support the IT technician and the communications and media coordinator. At five cents, we would support two additional dispatchers and some additional building maintenance, or I'm on a line off, sorry about that, additional park mowing, park maintenance and mowing for $265,000. So, then we have the six cents, which includes a little bit more. I won't read all of those to you, but this is a good chart, just to kind of give you a visual of what each cent, how that builds upon itself and allows additional needs to be built into the budget. At the bottom, I have some data for your reference there about the, what the penny, average penny generates, which is $261,000. We have 10,354 residential homes. We have 58.2% are owner occupied, 41.8% are non-owner occupied, and 26.9% are not affected due to exemptions. And then this slide shows you the cost to the average homeowner. The very left is our current tax rate. So, the average homeowner, or the homeowner based on the average taxable value pays $1,529 in city property tax. And then the subsequent columns will show you what each additional penny will bring. So, one penny, or will cost them. So, one penny will cost them average of $21 a month, which is $1.79, I'm sorry, $21 a year, which is $1.79 a month. And then that goes up to $43, $64, and so forth. And again, I've included that data at the bottom for your reference, should you need that. Does anybody have any questions at this time that I could answer?
Thank you for getting those statistics. I think it's pretty interesting that 40% of our homes are non-owner occupied.
Yes, yes, that's good information. I think every community should be looking at.
Right.
Because it affects a lot of things with budgeting and your citizens' needs, so.
So, if I'm doing my math right, really, like if you count out non-owner occupied and you just take the owner occupied and you minus those that it's not going to affect anyway, really, like it'll affect about 31% of our citizens.
I believe that's about right. That was one of the numbers that we looked at. Okay, our, what are our needs that are not included in the current proposed budget or with a tax increase? We have additional mowing and park maintenance. I know that there has been requests for a second mowing crew. We're a lot of city with a lot of parks and a lot of grass, so that makes up a lot of our mowing needs. Auto maintenance will continue to increase each year with inflation and aging vehicles. We need equipment every year. I see a lot of requests for equipments, whether it's a forklift or a backhoe or trailers. It's critical, in my opinion, that they have the equipment to do the tools that they need to do their job. Street materials, we did increase that in the budget, but we still need additional funding for the street, for the streets. We need that materials. If you recall, we bought an asphalt zipper. But now, we need materials so that we can use that equipment to take care of more streets. Electricity will most likely exceed our budget, it has the last two years. I budget based on what figures are given to me or provided through TCAP. We seem to always come in over that, but unfortunately, I don't have money to build a cushion into electricity, so we do anticipate going over budget currently as we stand. And then here we have our historical sales tax for the past 10 years, including the current year where we project to end. If you look at the chart on the right, you will see that the years fiscal year 20 through '22 were pretty steady. And then in '23, we saw a peak, which was nice. And then in '23 and '24, or '23, it started to decline part of '23. And then '24 and '25, it has slowed greatly. I would like to say that those numbers are not conservative, so the 3% may look like, oh, we're on the uptick. We will, it will be tough to meet that 8.6 million. I feel that we will, but it is not a conservative number, so it definitely will not exceed that amount. And then on the historical property tax basis, we have a chart as well. We have a similar pattern. We are steady in years fiscal year '21 and '22. '23, we see a peak. '24 is still up there, but not as much as fiscal year '23. And then '25, it starts coming down more. And then in '26, I was, I think, a disappointment to a lot of us in the budgeting side because we really are relying on property tax revenue for our budget and we are seeing a small increase in property tax basis.
So, even though we raised it six cents last year, our revenue only went up 1%?
Yes. That's when I do the calculations.
I think we're talking apples and oranges here.
Oh, yeah.
This is property tax. This is-
Or this is the property tax base, yes. So, you have exemptions coming on, falling off.
So, we increased just the total valuation, went up about 1%.
Okay, gotcha. Oh, yeah.
Of all the houses, however the CAD valued them, this is what they said that our dentistry tax base is in our city limits is about $3.26 billion.
Right, that's, okay, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. And these figures are taken from our certified totals. It's a net taxable line on those certified totals in case you want to match up those numbers. And I have all the past years of certified totals. If anybody needs a copy, I can definitely email those. And then on historical permits, we have a similar story. In 2021, we seem to have peaked at 114 permits. Well, this is for single-family residents and duplexes and townhomes. So, this does not include any commercial, does not include apartments. I just want to make that clear. But for the residential and duplexes and townhomes, we did peak in 2021. 2022 and 2023 start to decline. And then you could see 2024 and then 2025 where we're at currently at 100 permits. So, now let's look at our utility fund. We anticipated with our budget to end at 57 days of reserve. We are projecting to end at 50. The preliminary for fiscal year 26 is looking more grim at 48 days currently. I'm still crossing my fingers and hopeful that something will change. Maybe we'll have a dry summer, water, extra water cells, and that'll bring that up. But currently, that's what the projections are showing. Again, we have transfers in, which comes from our CIP fund to cover personnel, CIP personnel, including our CIP engineer, engineering person, Fanchin, I believe, who does a great job monitoring our projects. And that's important that we have somebody that oversee those projects strictly and to ensure that we are following budget, following guidelines. We also have CIP equipment that is financed. It is paid from the utility fund, but it is financed through CIP, so that transfer has to be over, has to be brought over to cover that. And then, again, as we mentioned earlier, we have some COLAs and pay adjustments built in that will be transferred in from the TASWA fund. So, what are some of our top increases in the utility fund? A large portion is our plan review and inspections with Public Works. Those are third-party reviews that are performed. I won't be able to speak on the details of those, I'm not involved in the engineering aspect. But our costs I've seen over the last couple of years continue to increase needing those third-party inspections and plan reviews. Fire hydrant maintenance, I did increase some, but it does need more than $37,000. And that is important to maintain our ISO rating. I think we've discussed that before. Postage increases is affecting us with about $45,000. If you go down, we have our insurance, our property and liability insurance, about $90,000 in the utility fund. Credit card merchant fees, we are budgeting $100,000 more in fiscal year 26 than we did in fiscal year 25. The number of transactions continued to increase along with the merchant fees. We're trying to get a grasp on that by looking at increasing our, or increasing our credit card convenience fee to the customers. Debt payments is your biggest jump at $1.68 million. I mean, the needs, the debt, the projects that we have going on is going to drive that up. Some years it will come down, you'll have some payments fall off. Last two years, we've had a lot of debt issuances, so that payment has continued to increase. Chemical supply, chemical supplies due to inflation. I know we talked about that last year as well. Those costs continue to increase along with the need for the chemicals, because it's not only the water treatment plant, but we also need those for sewer treatment plants as well. And then I want to mention on the enterprise again to, that amount needs to be removed because it does have some offsetting revenue that just slipped through on this presentation. So, that $46,000 should not be added into that total at the bottom. And then we have lift station maintenance. It looks minor, minimal at $5,000, but that has continued to exceed budget for the last two years. I pulled the history today with our maintenance, our lift stations aging. Each year, I feel like we seem to be putting more money into maintaining those. And then additional needs that are not built into the proposed budget or, well, these would not be supported with a tax increase. These would only be supported with water cells. So, the things that are not built into the budget are additional chemical supplies, some sewer pump and blower improvements, electricity needs, again, fire hydrant maintenance. Like I said, I did increase the budget some on that, but it needs significant, significantly more funding to maintain our fire hydrants, to maintain our ISO rating. Professional fees and utility line cuts, which has exceeded budget for the last two years as well. That is all I have. I do ask if council has anything that they would like to see differently. Either I can send to you or for the next meeting that we have or the next council meeting. So, if you do, please don't hesitate to reach out. I'm more than happy to provide this data in a format that works for you. I know everybody interprets information in different formats, so I'm more than happy to provide it, how you would like to see it. So, does anybody have any questions?
Laurie, on the general fund, can you tax increase page? Would you go over the, where the two communications special, dispatchers, where, does that follow in the six cent column or the five cent column?
Yeah, six cents, yes. My notes, I was on the wrong line reading my notes. It didn't correspond with the-
Okay. I got confused.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so the communicate, yes, that's with the six cent.
And I believe to correct me if I'm wrong, that with those, we could have a fire, full-time fire dispatcher and a police dispatcher. Right now, a police dispatcher can handle everything. So, we added two that we did dedicate one to the fire dispatcher and had to mix that. Is that correct?
Yes, we'd be closer to that goal certainly, you know, depending on how long vacations, those kind of things. But it would get us closer to be, it will have a dedicated police side and a dedicated fire unit, that's right. But it would get us closer to being, it will have a dedicated police side and a dedicated fire team, that's right.
I have a couple of questions. I got a little confused on the mowing items. We showed one for, I think it's, not sure which page this is, but we.
My apologies if slides don't have page numbers. I noticed that after I printed them.
Well, most of them actually do.
They do?
Yeah.
I knew page one and twelve did because I had to replace that one, but I think the other ones may not.
One was for public works and one was for, I remember you went, you went correct.
The items that I was looking at in the two thousand and twenty-six options, there was one ride-of-way mowing and maintenance for a hundred and eighty-five thousand. And then there was a parks mowing and maintenance for two hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Now, which slide are you on so I can ensure that I'm looking at?
Maybe this was on a worksheet that you sent out earlier.
I saw someone's page, you can see the ride-of-way mowing at the three cent column. And you can see the car that we need is charged at the house.
Okay. So we have our ride-of-way mowing, which it falls under our ride-of-way division, which you have, which in my mind, I picture that like around stop signs, ride-aways, easements, things like that, that we have control over. And then on, you have also park maintenance and mowing. We have THF Park, which is huge and eats up a lot of our costs to mow. And we have several parks, and I know that they are looking to have a second crew. We're needing a second crew, but that also includes, don't forget, mowers, which are very costly. So we have mowers, we have equipment, weed eaters, things like that. We also have that probably, or that does include, I shouldn't say probably, that does include also funding for our mower, what we call mower maintenance plan, where we have our mowers on a rotating cycle, the current mowers that we have. And this is the year we're up for rotating, and I want to say that's around forty thousand dollars to rotate those mowers. Because we found it's less costly to have the mowers replaced than to spend money on maintaining them, especially with the heavy use that we have on those mowers, so. And I did pull some data because I was looking at that as well. I don't have findings for you yet, but I did have one of my staff members pull information on mowing. She's still looking into that. And at this time, she's not seeing any issues with, with like duplication or anything on those costs. But I will give you a final finding on that after we finish looking.
Yep.
Basically, the ride-of-way is public works and the others specifically that P park.
Haven't we taken that back and house from contractors that weren't maybe doing as good a job as we had hoped?
Correct.
So you've got the one eighty-five and the two sixty-five on page six. And then there's another hundred thousand on additional needs on page eight. So.
What I have built into the five cent column would be the bare, bare minimum. It would still leave us struggling for part-time help possibly that we rely on to help with the summer months. Obviously, we don't want to hire full-time staff to be sitting in the winter months, so we rely on hiring part-time staff in the summer. So those are very conservative numbers. So yes, we, if we want to maintain a higher, or a very high standard of, for our city and our community, we would need additional funding to ensure that we could do that.
But are, are these brand-new expenses, this one fifty, one eighty-five and the two sixty-five?
Yes.
Are those brand-new expenses?
Yes.
And then the one hundred is a, is kind of a wish if we could.
Yes, yes.
We also only took that proportion of the outsourced, so there's still some outsourced and then some in-house.
So it's, it's expensive to have rain and growth.
And not enough people to do it.
Well, and I would just want to mention as well, it's not, our equipment costs are higher. For mowers, for example, we can't use just a standard mower that you would buy for your home. We have to have a commercial grade because of the amount of mowing that we do. So it's the, it's, it's all the little costs together, they add up significantly.
Lori, is the ride-of-way mowing also cover like the mowings out of the water plant, that type of stuff, or is that?
I found, I found those in the budget.
Okay.
Yeah, there were seven hundred thousand or some odd last year that I found and could identify from the draft budget. I don't know if that was the final budget, but there was about seven hundred thousand in mowing.
Right.
So am I?
That's correct.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
So.
And we did have some requests for some of those divisions, like the water treatment plan. Like they may request just a mower so their staff can, while they're already there working and they have downtime, they can be mowing, so.
If I can say something, on the public works side, it's about a hundred and eighty, what is it? That was the one that I, that was.
One eighty-five.
So what has happened is, so code enforcement, when they go out and issue a citation for somebody that want to take care of their yard or something like that, they have set timelines on when they issue a code violation on how long when we, when they do send somebody in to mow it, how long you have to put the lien and all that kind of stuff on the property. Mary had a contract during that and wasn't able to keep up with it. And so recently, well, you know, sort of, I guess, maybe a quarter of the way into this year, the mowing season, we took that on as public works and have started now mowing that. It's just been near recently that we were able to catch that up. One thing to combine is it's like, sometimes it goes up to forty to sixty addresses a week that get these kinds of complaints. And we only have two people trying to do this. And so we were way behind when we finally got started. Took, it took some time to switch from the contractor to us. And there was like, we had at one time over two markers up on the list. Now we are current, when we get the, every Tuesday, we get a list from code. The guys go mow it, and before the next Tuesday, it's completed and ready to go for the next list. So that's what we're mainly asking for, the third person to help us with that. All of the brandale and all that other stuff, that's already covered. That has nothing to do with any of this cost. This is just basically to help us with that code compliance mowing.
As well as a payment.
As well as a what?
As a payment.
Yes.
For properties that might need a clean and lean. So if we have to go in and issue, or staff or park staff goes in because of accumulated waste or junk, that staff is also taking care of that before we clean the property.
I've seen a recent email about that, it seems.
Yes.
And not to add any confusion to that, but I think because of some of the mowing, we were outsourced and brought back in, we do have parks manage as a ride-of-way contract as well. But I'm sure our stuff were lumped into the parks. So when you hear ride-of-way, that creates some confusion. But we do manage ride-of-way areas, it's just separate, the ones that public works manages.
Other questions for all this glorious news? All right. Thank you, Ms. Lori.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So our job is to look through this and see what we think would be our preferences some way, somehow, if we wanted to either stay at zero tax increase or if we wanted to look at a one, two, three, four, five, six cent or ten cents or twenty, whatever. But it wouldn't be that much for sure. But so that's our job as the, as the council. Is there, does anybody have any thoughts at the moment on preferences or questions? I'm looking at, at page six, which is up on your screen right in front of you.
Yeah, okay.
Mayor, if I can, just one comment I want to make on that. If you see at the top, street maintenance funding, five hundred thousand dollars there, and that carries across to any of the increases other than the one cent. The biggest component that we get, and I think that you get, are our streets. So we feel that is, should be highlighted and is important. So any of these include that. If you just did a one cent, then that two sixty-one, two thirty-nine would go to streets. We have one million dollars in the budget for twenty-seven for street maintenance right now. So if, let's say you did a one cent, then we'd have one point two sixty-one in there for streets. If you did a two cent, a two six cent, a half million maintenance all the way through there. So you'd have a million and a half in streets that way, so. Or if you saw something down here that you wanted to move up into streets, very different. That's why we gave you this graph this way, so that you can look at it and see what you feel is important and what you get calls on, complaints on also.
But, but this is not set in stone. If we had a preference, we could. So yes, we think that number, line seven is more important than line two or whatever.
That's my initial thoughts are. Kind of thinking. I'm just going to ramble on some thoughts, try to keep it under a, an increase of a hundred dollars for the average person, something like four and a half cents. And then I think you could move from the five cent thing, parks, mowing and maintenance up, and maybe you could remove cemetery road repairs, public safety IT and communications media director. That would be my priority, but that's why I was thinking it was like four and a half cents. Keeps it under a, an increase of a hundred dollars per year, so they will accomplish.
Got it, that's.
I'm open.
Yeah, that's, well, I think we all are. It's a, it's not a fun budget to, to be thinking about.
Well, I think when we were here last year, there were some things that weren't included had we not raised the taxes. I think one of the things was a COLA and some of those other items, which this year, if we don't raise it at all, those are still in place, correct? Moving up the tax rate a little over nine percent last year was uncomfortable. And coming back for a consecutive year later to say, hey, guys, we're going to do this again, is, is also uncomfortable. So initially, how I feel, just from the standpoint of, of being, you know, the councilman for the city of Denison and having to see people in there. Every time we go out, it's like, man, the two years that you were here already, you've raised the taxes. What you going to do in year three, the same thing? And so it, it's, it's tough to just be at that place, you know? When you look at a COLA increases, what, three percent, two and a half, three and a half? And we went up nine percent last year. It's, it's tough to do this a second year in a row. That's just how I feel about it.
I'm looking for a page I want to.
What are you looking for?
A page.
A page?
I guess maybe. It may not be in here. If you look at our increases in chemicals, it's horrendous. It's over two hundred percent in the last five or six years. It's doubled. And that's, that's, we're, we're at about a million dollars right now. That's four cents of a tax rate just for chemicals. So it's, you know, we're all burdened with inflation, even though right now inflation's down a little bit. It's not, it was not five or six percent like it was. And I think we're all hopeful that we'll have some interest rate give by the Fed in September. I think that, that could help us on, on, in many respects. Won't help us on the interest income. But we don't have a lot of that anyway, so. But it's just, it's not, this is, this is not an easy, easy decision. And I, I totally understand what you're saying. I'm not excited about it. Yes, ma'am, do you want to come on?
Yes, I want to point out, I did send a memo last night, so you might want to review that. And you can see in the middle of the memo, at like twenty, it has a twenty, fiscal year twenty-three through twenty-six and what our revenue was generated from our property tax. You can see it go up from fiscal year twenty-three to twenty-four, one point three million roughly. Fiscal year twenty-five is when we did our tax increase. Had we not done that, now this is revenue on top of the prior year's revenue, but with the cost of inflation, you need to also see that increase. And then if you look at fiscal year twenty-six, we are seeing it increase significantly less than what it did in the prior two years. So just wanted to share that information in case it gave you any additional insight.
I have a suggestion or something that I would like to see. I think sometimes when we look at the page of the top expenditure increases, some of these are directly associated from one jump away with revenue. And if there's an asterisk or even another line that says, hey, yeah, we have our merchant fees that went up a hundred thousand, but, you know, we had this offsetting fee that we added that made us two hundred thousand. If we had another line to see that, because I, I know it can look a little skewed sometime whenever we have these fees, even TASWA fees. So if it's, you know, one jump away, and postage may not be, but I think sometimes postage can be closely, closer associated. I know with all the times when we send out, you know, mailouts, even with violations of, you know, their, their yard, you know, we don't necessarily just generate revenue from that initially. But I think with, you know, even the, the water bills that are sent out, you know, hey, we're making money off of it every time, so.
Excellent ideas to count down from this. I will say on the convenience fees, we lose money. A lot of us, we lose our, our charge on convenience fees, we lose.
Next kind of.
We did increase the fees, we did lose less, but it's still very significant.
We've increased it to the maximum amount we're allowed, which is four percent. We did that a month ago. We increased that on credit card fees. And you have the other choices, you don't pay credit cards, and that's not a good choice. Then we have a problem with collections, obviously. So, but we have to push it up as far as we can.
And there'd be people like me that'll say, hey, I'm tired of that fee. I'm just going to have you debit my bank account, which is better for us, honestly.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'd like to see a push to, you know, ACH, you know, try to get that, get people to adopt that for sure. Because all taxpayers are paying because of the convenience fee, not just.
Especially when we're losing that, yes.
And this is, I tell you, this is a problem that they try to hide.
Yeah.
With these credit card fees. Because people would use that to get points and vacations and things like that. I'd do the same thing. But it does cause hardship for us when, on the other side, the feds limit us on how we recover our fees back now. I hate that. I mean, I've counted before, I do say you deal with the same problem in your business with that. So a few cities have gone to only debit cards, period. That's all they'll take, they don't pay credit cards. I do think that would create a collection problem for us. Don't know, we wouldn't know if we tried, but that's, that's something in the future we can look at.
Unless you only took them for shut-off emergencies or something like that. Now they're going to shut off and they only could use a credit card.
Yeah.
I would like to let you know on the chemical side.
Yes, sir.
We are, we have made changes in lock-in plans. We are changing certain chemicals, like I get the names mixed up. We're changing cost to chlorine the oxide, and we're locking in. We're changing cost to chlorine the oxide, and we're locking in a price. And before, we hadn't had it where it was like a one-year contract. Now we're doing a one-year contract where the price is locked in for one year.
Excellent.
We are doing some things like that.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, that's, we've gotta look for every little penny.
And Aaron, I see what you're saying, I mean, completely, but the cost of cola is over a million dollars. We'd have to raise our sell, we have to raise our tax rate by four cents every year, just to keep up with the cola.
Yeah, well, that's already included in the budget right now.
Well, but, but if you, and that number supposedly is gonna go up. But, we, I guess my point is we can't do nothing. Because we're, we're gonna be in the same boat next year.
Uh, for, uh, lean more and more on Tazewatt every year to, to help fund our operating expenses. Now, the good news is Preston Harbor is supposed to have a, a groundbreaking here pretty quick. And I think that's, you know, we've gotta be optimistic about that, to get some new homes out there and, and, uh, those will be, uh, homes that'll be taxed at, uh, quite a bit more than probably what our average taxable home is right now.
So, Michael, I see what you're saying about the under a hundred dollars. But the nickel, I think, is a lot more important than the four cents. So that would be a hundred and eight dollars, you know, eight dollars and ninety-five cents a month. I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's count, I was thinking four and a half or a nickel.
Right.
I'd like to clarify something as well, on the permits side. Those are permits that have been final, right? They've been issued a CDO. There are still, uh, a hundred that have been pooled for other housing units, but we learned in a meeting yesterday, there's a, kind of eleven-month supply of vacant homes right now in the Dennison area. So, that interest rate doesn't come down, even if those permits are final, they're still just sitting there vacant. So we're still not necessarily collecting the way we need to. So there's a, there's an imbalance, and I think, again, that's in the whole region, right? And so until that happens, I don't see those coming online the way we need them to.
And we don't know what that final number will be, because this is a, this is a correction of the overcorrection, when the home values went up inorganically, and then now it's trying to correct itself. So you're right, it's basically a year's supply.
But we'll still collect property tax.
Right.
Correct.
Um, maybe not a hundred percent this year, but next year, we should be at a hundred percent of that.
Until somebody moves them out.
Right.
Says there, and we're still missing.
Yeah, but whoever, uh, the owner of the property's still liable for the taxes, even there, even if no one's in the home, I think.
But the average home value three years ago was two twenty-one, this year it's two fourteen, again with the correction.
Yeah, Preston Harbor, obviously, is gonna improve on that as they get started, um, but we're not gonna see any help from that in the next year.
Preston Harbor doesn't help these guys right, right now.
Not at all.
Right. Or these guys.
We probably won't see that revenue until twenty twenty-eight.
Nine.
Yeah, earliest.
Right.
Right.
You know, we're gonna have, uh, uh, there's a large number in here, uh, half a million dollars, uh, for that grant that, that we're gonna have twenty-one new fire, uh, firemen, uh, that are gonna have to be ready to fight Preston Harbor fires, but at the end of next year. Uh, that's a, that's a big number, but, you know, uh, that's only twenty-five percent, our cost, this year?
That's right. Twenty-five.
Yeah.
This year, next year.
So it's a bargain.
And then it goes, then it goes, but we're only looking for sixty-five percent.
Yeah. It's a bargain if we can, if we can, if that comes through.
City about four million dollars, going to the last of that grade.
Well, the other, have you up to that too, because you gotta let put those far up. So we'll be spending nine to ten billion dollars for a fire station out there. Um, we, you're gonna see on the council agenda Monday night, they contract approved design for that fire station. And that'll get us a year down the road, but at some point, we gotta fund that in the future. Not anything we have to worry about today, but it's certainly something that adds to these issues that we're talking about.
And we don't, we don't have to big, build a huge, big fire station that day one. We can get by on smaller metal buildings, probably, for a bit, until we, until we get there.
When we increase our tax rate, it affects every property owner in Dennison. And when I look at the list of items that are suggested to, uh, enhance, add improvements, add positions, it doesn't affect every property owner in Dennison. I think the street maintenance may be one of the ones that, um, you know, the most people will probably get out of it. Um, but I, I guess, you know, from the standpoint of, you know, we're, we're asking everyone to, hey, chip in a little bit more, even if it is a hundred dollars a, a year on their property taxes for things that may not directly affect their life and enhance their life. And like I said, it's just, it's a hard thing to ask. You know, I think streets is probably the, the, I see why it's the number one that's on the list, because that's the one thing that we all hear about, is our streets. Um, but even at a one-cent rate, it's, it's, I think, Bobby, you said that one cent, that two hundred and seventy thousand would get absorbed into that. Um, it, it's, it's just still tough, I guess, for all of the things that are suggested on the two, three, four, five, six cents, um, to, to be able to sell that to citizens of Dennison.
But there is some benefit to, to every citizen. Um, you know, if we can raise property values, their property value goes up, you know, with different things that we bring to the city.
That's a blessing and a curse, right?
Yeah. You buy, you buy properties and you know what, what they're going for, which is a whole lot more than they used to.
But that's why they're not selling, right? That's why there's eleven-month supply.
That's true.
Where, where, where to standoff, like an old western.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's likely to turn around pretty quickly.
Yes, no, it's, and it will, it always does.
A lot of people are just waiting for that drop.
Mm-hmm.
Um, department heads, anybody wanna speak or say anything, or? I fear your pain.
Are we, are we allowed to just ask questions back and forth? Is that okay?
Sure.
Um, so, let's just say we're sitting here, let's just say we did nothing this year, I'm making all this up. And we're sitting here again, next year at this time, what are the ramifications of that, you know, non-action, if you will?
It's definitely gonna be worse if we don't try to gain some ground this year. Uh, you know, it's, I don't wanna use the word detrimental, uh, but it would really depend on, like we said, when Preston Harbor comes on, um, and, and, you know, it has to be on the tax roll, it'll be about a year before we actually collect the taxes. Um, so it's really a timing issue. Uh, so I think if we don't act this year, we will still be struggling significantly next year, and possibly see some relief the year after that.
Okay, thank you.
I use, if I use the library as a good example, y'all all saw the videos about that, shake the library. That's a can we kicked down the road, I know for five years. Uh, it's been asked to do something there every year, and we've said, well, we need this, or do we need that? Um, so what you're seeing a lot of this is kicking the can down the road, and now we're getting several cans at the end of the road.
Too many cans, not enough feet to kick them, right?
That's right. I mean, we still have facilities issues, police departments, buildings, it's in need of a lot, and they're in need of space and so forth. So what we typically end up doing is going after the little things that we have enough money to take care of that. And then sometimes the big things get pushed out. So it's, it's a whole lot like budgeting when I got married, you know? And can we afford this apartment, or do we have to get this trailer house out here in the trailer park?
Right.
And that's a lot of, of what we're dealing with, uh, with this stuff. And it's difficult, growth is very difficult. The reward is down the road, and we can all see what that reward's gonna be. But we gotta figure out how to maneuver everything in between to get there.
Bobby, did you mention, um, before, I can't remember when, uh, were we planning on doing a study for our, our water and how much we're charging on our utilities?
We do that every five years, and it's due again in two years.
On two years?
Yes.
Two of them?
Yes.
Okay.
Down the road.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, the reason why I ask, I know, you know, we mentioned the supplies, the chemicals and everything that's, that's going up. And I know our water bill is higher than others, and, um, you know, and I'm not sure, you know, we're charging enough or not. I just know with us already having the, the highest property taxes and the highest water bills, like I said, it's just, I, I'm gonna keep saying it, but it's, it's just tough to be at a place where it's like, hey, let's add another, you know, few cents on.
I know, I, I, I get what you're saying. This is only a hundred thousand dollars out of the deal, but the cemetery road repairs, can that be done in-house with our zipper, or?
Working on that right now. Uh, I think it would require some more material costs to do that. Am I right, Ronnie? That's only a million more.
I'm just asking, yeah.
First guy, first time the guys got, uh, equipment, they got the other test road, and it did a good job for the first time. Um, and so, yes, we can do it in-house, but we're looking, and we were talking about, it was like, during the winter, when this is not a good time to do it on public streets, then we can go to, you know, our off time, go through the street here and there, and a couple, you know, take a couple of years to do it. But, uh, go by, is it Lamar? Go by Lamar. It was the first time recruits ever done an overlabor project with the new chute, the lay-down machine and the zipper over there getting it ready for school, uh, first day of school. The first time, I mean, it's not perfect, but they did an awesome job.
That's good, okay.
It looked really good. So we're, we're gearing up, we're getting there, and we can start doing more and more as we, uh, as we can, but it's the materials that we gotta, we need to help.
Okay.
I will caveat that the hundred thousand is just materials.
Oh.
That is material for the cemetery roads to work alongside Gracian County Public Works.
Okay, thank you for that.
Gracian County will actually do the work for us for you, we might have materials.
Really?
The problem we've always had is we have to have the material before the over to select a date, and so we're always trailing on the back end.
Right, okay.
So the work that recently we did out at Paramount, at Fairview, was with Public Works to help with some material funding that we had.
Before you all fall asleep.
That's after lunch. Fall asleep after lunch.
Oh, yeah, but it's, it's just eleven, but we've still got three hours to go here.
More stacks.
Who else has questions? If not, I appreciate everybody's comments. Thank you, staff, for, for being here and, and, uh, um, it's not fun to be a councilman these times, but, uh, Ronnie?
We'd like to, uh, Mr. Thomas to answer your question on the water, the rates and all that kind of stuff. And I'm not, I'm not being mean, I'm just saying, the kicking the can down the road is what's caused us to have these higher expenses at our plants, because they're, they're helping many things, and the cost is more now to do that. So that's, that's how we, that's what happens when you kick it down the road to borrow. To answer with you, there's some parts of the library that maybe needs to be cordoned off, we don't do anything with it because they're, the roof fall.
Is there a scenario where, uh, you know, our water treatment plants, uh, whatever needs to be, uh, invested in, in the money spent in order to get it to where, hey, this is gonna serve us, it's gonna serve us for the next however many years? Is there a scenario where the cost for the citizens could reverse at some point, or is it just gonna keep going up still?
You know, at some point in time, you wish that would happen, but in all the other cities that I've worked with, and still keep contact with, it doesn't happen. They give them up to great standards, and then, I mean, when I went to work in Fireman, their, their facilities were top-notch, beautiful. But you always still have something that breaks, and, and now the costs are even higher than the order back when they put them in. So it's, I don't think we'll ever get there. Now, will it keep it from going further higher? Yes, I would, I think that, but I don't think it'll ever get, like, a discount. Or even drop backwards in the cost, just by opinion.
An example is, we had three pumps that ran down, that run?
Four.
Four. We had, we were down to one pump recently, because they were breaking. Uh, and that happens when we sell more water and then more pressure on the system and more pressure on lines. That's why you see more leaks in summertime, because you pump more water through these hundred-year-old lines. Uh, but we were down to one pump, and that's serious, when you're talking about water to the city. Uh, we pull them out, we get them rebuilt, we put them back in, but, and it's like a car, at some point, you gotta trade that thing in for something else.
It can maybe hard to swallow, because a lot of the needs are things that people don't see, or they don't see until they actually meet it. Right, at public safety, you pray that you don't have to call nine-one-one, but if you do, you hope someone's there. And so, there are items that maybe don't recognize, they're not tangible, but they can see a benefit of it, right? But if it's not good, then we sure are gonna hear about it.
And on the other side, we are able recently to take advantage of some savings on some things. Uh, we're gonna have two motorcycle, uh, motorcycles delivered to us here soon. And that's because Harley had two demos that we looked at last year to try to get into that program, and it was gonna be about eighty-five thousand dollars for the two motorcycles. Well, they contacted the chief recently and said we have two demos with two hundred miles on them, uh, and we'll sell them to both of them for thirty thousand dollars. So we took advantage of that, and we're using the restricted funds that the chief had, and it didn't affect the budget.
Right.
Could thank the local local dealers.
That's right.
And so that's gonna allow us to have two.
Keep on giving them a motorcycle.
Uh, that can help us significantly with all the construction on seventy-five, they can get to accidents faster than the cars can. So those are things that we're doing to save money.
And a lot less expensive than a Tahoe.
Yes, a Tahoe's ninety-five.
Yeah, yeah, well, we have.
So.
Our staff is.
That I would point that out.
I'm gonna say before they went out, yeah, yeah.
Our staff personally, I think they did a really good job of looking, and their chief Jaxx has said, well, have looked at contracts. I know a couple of workers trying to do that work right now with Enterprise, looking at the contracts and determining if that's the best contract for us, and if there's savings to move to a different contractor, to a different vendor. Mark and I had this conversation this week about looking at those things, and so I know later, Colin's in on the concerns that council has, but those are also concerns they have as well. And so I just wanna give kudos to our staff for working with them, the confines of the budgets that they do have, and trying to make things work.
Excellent point, thank you. Um, I was coming to work this morning, and I saw an ambulance coming through town that wasn't ours. It was a white ambulance with.
Allegiant.
Allegiant, yes, I saw that this morning.
We contracted with them, uh, and the reason for that is they make the calls, like, to the nursing homes, where somebody needs to go to the hospital to get a blood pressure check or something like that. Uh, and that takes that responsibility off of our people, uh, 'cause we don't, you know, if we get them tied up with a nursing home, we have a major accident on seventy-five. So we did a small contract with them and let them take that over, and that's gonna be a big help to us.
Well, they were working this morning, just.
That's right. It's glad, glad to know.
Um, council, I think it's our job to do a little homework. Uh, what do you want us to do? You want us to get back with you, or send you an email, Bobby, or what, what, how do we go from here?
Well, we can talk about it at the next meeting that we have, where Laurie has an item that we're not gonna do it Monday night, because we have today. But if the next meeting, council meeting, if you do it that way, uh, or if you wanna send me an email, or call me, or whatever. I mean, uh, quick meeting, one-on-one, whatever, whatever works best for y'all. But we would just like to have some guidance so that we know where we're going and we can. But we would just like to have some guidance so that we know where we're going and we can finalize the numbers. And keep in mind, we still have six weeks left. And the way city budgets work until the last day of September, we're still adding revenue. And so, some of these numbers will still change some as we go forward until we close out on the last day of September.
But we need to have a firm plan by September the second, that Tuesday, that way on September the fifteenth, we can enact it.
That's right. September the second, you have to know if you're gonna do a tax rate or not or whatever. You need to know what that is and then by the fifteenth, we'll vote on the budget and then we'll vote on the tax rate.
Okay. So, if you're more comfortable emailing Bobby, uh, please do so. Otherwise, we can, we can have some discussion. Uh, it won't be, it won't be Monday night, is that what you're saying? Because we're meeting here today?
That's right.
Uh, so it'd be. What day would that be? Would that be the second?
The second, yeah.
Okay, so.
That would be the second.
We're here pretty quick.
Is this format what you want to see for the second as well, which is updated information?
That's, that's fine with me.
And if you have questions, please reach out. If you have one of them, uh, if you need something answered, we're happy to do that.
Okay. Don't mind it. Do you mind if we, uh, end this session so you can go take care of your wisdom? We do appreciate you sticking it out. Sorry about your surgery, but, uh, glad you're on the mend now, so, anyway. Uh, everybody in the room, thank you. Uh, we couldn't do it without you. Uh, we'll, we'll meet the challenge some way somehow and as we always have. And, uh, uh, you know, it might just be nice to have Reverend Thorne dismiss us with a prayer today. If y'all don't mind, could we, could we stand, please?
That's great. Our Father in heaven, we thank you for your presence with us today. Lord, every time we make a move, we want you to be in front of us. Lord, we know that you know everything, you can do everything. You know our thoughts before we thank them. And that's why we need you. We need you for our city. Everybody got their own opinions. But Father, we have been chosen as the council to sit down together and, 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 and with your help, uh, think of the best way of doing things. And Lord, we know that everybody's not gonna be satisfied, but I pray that we do things decent and in order. I pray that we all learn to walk in love, help one another whenever we can in whatever we're doing. And for all the things that has been said today and, and, and offered up today, we pray on God that you would touch our hearts and when we meet again on this subject, that we might be closer to, uh, what we need to be. Lord, we thank you so much for being God, all by yourself. And I pray that those of us that know that you're God and believe that you're God and believe that you control everything, even though we have our opinions, that we would hold fast to our faith and believe that we're doing the right thing because we're following your leadership. In your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We're adjourned at, uh, can't see, but I think it's eleven fourteen. All right.